Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our public hearing to discuss the Residential Property Assess Clean Energy Program, commonly referred to as R-PACE. My name is Emmanuel Reamey, member of Columbus City Council, and I am the Chair of Economic Development and the Environment Committees. Before we begin, I would like to thank everyone for their work in preparation for today's discussion, including our speakers, Mark Lundeen, Administrator of the Economic Development Division, City of Columbus, John Caleb Bell, Chair of Bricker &amp; Eckler's Public Finance Policy Practice Group, Dustin Rylik, Vice President of Market Development, Renovate America, who will be providing today's presentation, and of course, all the staff here at Glenwood Recreation Center who prepared the space for us this afternoon. I'd also like to recognize my council colleague Shayla Faber, and thank you for joining us this afternoon. Thank you to Latina, sorry, excuse me, thank you for Latina Humphrey from the County Auditor's Office, Michael Sinziano, for being here and tabling in the back. So if you haven't had a chance to see her and signing up for their newsletter, please go ahead and check that out. A special thank you to all the members of the public for taking the time this afternoon to engage with us in this discussion. I would like to remind everyone that there will be an opportunity to provide public testimony. If you would like to do so, please fill out a speaker slip in the back, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes. We will accept speaker slips until the end of the presentation. In order to get through all the speakers, we will likely not be able to address all of your questions here today. However, representatives from the Department of Economic Development, as well as City Council, will continue to follow up with you after today's meeting. The purpose of this public hearing is to learn more about the R-PACE program, why the city is considering it, how it works for vendors, how it works for residents, who administers the program, the benefits of R-PACE, and where to go for more information. So to get us started off, we'll go ahead and start with Mark Lundeen. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks. I want to thank Councilmember Reamey, Councilmember Faber, and the Glenwood Recreation Center for hosting this public hearing. I'm Mark Lundeen. I'm the Economic Development Administrator for the City of Columbus. I am also, in my spare time, the Chair of our Commercial PACE Board for Central Ohio. And so I'm going to give you a little background on what PACE is and how it works, as well as how the Commercial PACE process has been working in the Columbus region for the last three years, and then let Caleb and Dustin explain further on Residential PACE. So just a quick primer on PACE. It is Property-Assessed Clean Energy Finance. Essentially, what that means is it is a financing mechanism that enables energy efficiency projects or renewable energy projects to be financed over a long period of time, and market interest rate, and repaid through a special assessment that's placed on your taxes that runs with the property. So as it changes hands or is sold, the owner who's saving the energy is also paying the, repaying the costs of improvements. A couple of the things that are really important about just PACE in general is, prior to this mechanism, which was invented in California 10, 12 years ago?
About 10 years ago.
About 10 years ago. Is, you know, when you would go to a bank for financing of whether a commercial or residential project, they would give you a short-term, higher-interest-rate loan, and, you know, the person applying for the loan was responsible for paying it back. And so it wouldn't timeout with the costs that you're saving in energy, right? And the design of this program is really to show an evaluation of how much money you're going to save per month in energy, and line that up with the repayment of the improvement cost. And in the whole, you know, over time, you're saving a little bit each month in energy, and so you're able to repay those costs. You know, on the commercial side, we authorized the Commercial PACE program, and City Council approved it in 2016. You know, Chairperson Liz Brown, I think, was the Environment Committee Chair and spearheaded the initial Commercial PACE program. And we were very excited. We had a big signature project that started it, which was the PNC Plaza Building downtown. Had a press conference, and then nothing happened for a while. And, you know, I think we all thought, maybe this is a tool that's going to be used for a couple of projects here and there. And suddenly, in the last two and a half years, we've seen a significant growth in the use of this tool. And I think the reasons are, A, it takes some time for people to understand it, and it took the commercial lending environment some time to get comfortable with this structure. But once they saw the idea of, we can realize cost savings and use those savings over time to pay off the cost of improvements, I think everyone became really attracted to it. And so what's happened in the Columbus region is, in the Commercial PACE side, is we felt it was really important to do two things in setting up the board. The first was that it would be regional. So, you know, City of Columbus, City of Bexley, City of Westerville, all were operating in one region. And I actually see some board members here, including Josh Roth from Franklin County, who's helping us administer it. And so we have kind of a universal program across the Columbus region that is enabling all municipalities to participate in it. We also felt it was really important to be an open market, so anyone who wanted to be a lender or an investor in PACE could have access to it. And to date, we've had nine different lenders in the region, eight in the city. And so, you know, as we took those steps, I think it's important to remember that for this project, that we've found those to be successful. And we're working, as a board, to understand Residential PACE and work across municipalities with that as well. Just a quick facts on where we are with the Commercial PACE program. In the City of Columbus, we've financed over $76 million in energy improvements, which represents 26 different projects. The energy reduction involved in that is over 39% of their energy usage, which is significant. The general term and rate of the loans has been 20 years and 5.7%. So it'll be, you know, different for residential, obviously, but I'm just giving you a picture of what the Commercial PACE has looked like. And it's been really every kind of project, from the PNC Tower, that's a big, huge building, to new construction. We've done projects as small as $15,000 to $20,000 and as big as $15 million. So we've found ways to be able to achieve energy savings in many different kinds of buildings. We've actually used it quite a bit in historic renovations. It's become kind of a basic piece of financing for any major historic rehab. So I think that's been interesting to see. Overall, in our region, we've done 35 projects, which represents $91 million in investments. And Ohio is actually the second-largest Commercial PACE market in the country, next to California. And for being in year three and seeing that kind of success, I think it talks to the relevance of this financing tool for the commercial market. So some of the things that the administration's evaluating around Residential PACE, I think these guys that speak after me will help to explain, is, you know, if you have a building like the PNC Tower, the owners of that building have the ability to hire attorneys that are very smart and able to review all the nuances of the agreements. You know, they have energy consultants that are evaluating the best implementations of energy efficiency within the building, and are able to study those in a detailed manner. And they just have a lot of professionals around them that, you know, allows them to go in eyes wide open on what they're signing up for. And so we want to make sure that that's the case with Residential PACE, that there's the opportunity for a homeowner or an owner of a single-family property to really understand what they're signing up for before they commit to it, and to also have transparency to the term and the rate of the loan, and then what other options might exist for them as they're looking to make energy improvements. The last thing that I think is really important is a lesson that's been taken from other states is the consumer protections that are involved in making these loans and using them for energy improvements. And so I'm looking forward to hearing that. With that, I'll turn it over to Caleb.
Sure. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mark, and, you know, thank you, Councilman Reamey, and Councilwoman Faber, for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am Caleb Bell. I'm a partner with Bricker &amp; Eckler, law firm, Chair of the Public Finance Group, and I have been working very closely with Mark and other policymakers around the state over the years to really evaluate how Residential PACE might work. A lot of folks have seen some success in the commercial side, and they start to ask the natural next question, which is, can we make these types of improvements available for homeowners? Are there ways in which we can really, you know, make the law function, you know, make it work on a mass scale? Obviously, there's many, many more individual property owners who, you know, like you and me, you know, may own homes. And so that's really where the policy conversation has gone. Residential PACE is therefore, you know, a priority for a lot of communities, in part because folks are already doing some of these types of improvements. They're doing, for the first time, you're seeing solar go on rooftops in Central Ohio. You're certainly seeing a kind of regular activity to renovate homes, to get homes marketable, perhaps for sale, perhaps just because you're living in it for a long time and you want to have good, efficient windows or doors. And so all those policy reasons behind Residential PACE are out there. The difficulty in trying to make this program function is, in part, it needs to accommodate volume. There are many individual properties instead of, as Mark was mentioning, some of these larger commercial properties. Secondly, it also needs to work over a geographic area that's big enough to attract lenders, to attract contractors who are willing and able to operate in the space. So several of the finance entities, like here in Central Ohio, the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority, and across the state, our friends in Toledo, the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority, our friends in Akron, the DFA of Summit County, all got together and said, is there a way that we could bring Residential PACE to Ohio? And the answer, over a period of years, was yes, we can. And the way that that works is really a shared services program. Columbus and other jurisdictions voluntarily choose whether or not to make the program available to their citizens, and the financing is done all together, all at once, so that there's really a much more efficient way to bring capital into Ohio. And so the shared services model is the way that Residential PACE has been proposed for Ohio. I think that that model has a lot of benefits because of, primarily, it'll help reduce costs and keep volume capable of occurring. I'd also want to comment on Mark's notes about consumer protections. One of the reasons why it took a couple of years to get here was that we really wanted to make sure that Ohio protected the individual homeowner, that the individual customer who may choose to finance something here has a different experience than perhaps folks have had in the past. This product is only about 10 or 11 years old, if you go as far back in time as California. In Ohio, the law has been in place since 2009. It was revised in 2010, and since those initial enactments by the General Assembly, it's been available. The difficulty, again, is trying to get to a point where policymakers feel comfortable that the model works for capital to deploy into the state, and also that the consumer protections are present. So those consumer protections, just to go through them real quick, kind of uniquely, Ohio will be the first place in the country where a residential energy efficiency loan is subject to two different types of testing. The first type of testing, which is basically done everywhere, is value. It's a value-based test. Do you have equity in your home? Do you have value in your home, against which, you know, a lending product can be underwritten? So that value-based test is the first one. The second one is the ability of the homeowner to actually pay the financing back. You might think of, you know, a situation where, you know, you go to buy a car perhaps, or to get a home loan, you will obviously have your credit pooled. That will occur with this program. This program will have individual homeowners subject to a credit pool, so that their FICO score must be a sufficient number. The number in the consumer protections that's been approved thus far is 620. So 620 or better, as well as a sufficient amount of equity in your home. So those two basic tests put some guardrails on the system to ensure that somebody who uses this product is somebody who has a home in which there is equity, that this product will not put them underwater, this product will not result in them having, you know, a negative experience with their lending. You know, our primary bank is our house, for the most part. And then the other thing is, you know, make sure that folks can pay. Even if you have some equity, you may not have a lot of income. And so that FICO score helps to test the income and the ability of the property owner to pay. So just some comments there, Mark, to react to your question. And I would tell you that, just one other note, the governments around the state that have all collaborated on this, you know, had basically asked one of the local governments, which is the Toledo Port Authority, who had some experience in a pilot program. They said, you know, you guys have done a pilot program. Are you willing and able to be the single entity for the state that issues bonds, that issues debt for these products? And so that entity worked with, looked around the country, found the different residential providers, and decided Renovate America was the one that they wanted to hire for the startup phase of the program. So that's an introduction to Dustin as well, and so I will turn it over to Dustin for further comments.
It's Bush, right? Oh, just talk. Okay, I apologize. So I'm Dustin Rylik. I'm the Vice President of Market Development for Renovate America. I want to thank everyone here as well. Thank you very much, Mark and Caleb, and councilmembers for having us here, and the opportunity to bring such a great program to the state of Ohio and to the City of Columbus. I'll just go ahead and start with kind of a background on what PACE is. It's Property-Assessed Clean Energy Financing, and it actually helps homeowners to be able to do energy efficiency projects at their home, so that they can update their home, and they simply pay it back as a line item on their property tax bill in the future. It's a new way to pay for energy efficiency and renewable upgrades at your home. And it's created with the local government partnership and the statewide partnerships that we've created here in the state to make this available. It helps a homeowner to be able to pay for those improvements with a fixed rate of interest over a long-term financing mechanism. So our financing mechanism's five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years, so that a homeowner can actually spread out that payment over time, and it is a fixed amount that they would be spreading out on that payment, as opposed to some of the other products in the industry that are variable rates, and thus can change on someone if it's not a fixed rate. So let me start with who Renovate America is and why Renovate America came to be. We began as a company back in 2008 and 2009, as the PACE legislation started to roll out on a national basis. There's about 33 states that have PACE legislation throughout the United States. And part of the reason that PACE was created, because one in six homeowners every year decides to do some sort of upgrade to their home that has to do with the energy efficiency of their home. So PACE, actually, as Mark had stated earlier, is a new mechanism that can help homeowners to finance, or property owners in general, on a commercial basis, to finance those projects long-term, and see the energy savings, and hopefully offset the energy savings with whatever that new payment is that they have as a line item on their property tax bill. It helps local communities to provide the ability for homeowners to lower their utility bills, update their properties, really to be able to love where they live, and to be able to create a nice environment for their family. There's consumer protections we've put into place that also were codified by the statewide program being created here, and those were from lessons learned in other marketplaces over time that have made this a much better and safer program for all of your constituents as this program is rolled out. And obviously, we all know, when we do energy efficiency upgrades, it's going to help to reduce CO2 emissions, decrease energy consumption, and increase the renewable generation within our communities. So Renovate America, as a company, we provide the ongoing capital, we provide the ability for a scalable model throughout the entire state, so that we actually have a technology platform that helps local contractors to grow their businesses, and to be able to empower them to work with local homeowners, to present this as a financing option for them. We have a dependable support staff that is available. We also have recently, I was just telling councilmen, we recently hired two contractor interfacing representatives here in the state of Ohio, as well as I have a couple of people that are with me. My Regional Director for Colorado East, which is Donovan Shade, that's sitting in the back, for any of you contractors that want to reach out, as well as Jake Davis. He's phenomenal and local to the marketplace, so he's out here working with our local contractors all the time. So what the program provides is 100% financing for the project that can be put on their property tax bill over time. And of course, I've already gone into the different terms and so forth, but this helps homeowners to do furnace upgrades, HVAC upgrades, insulation, and doors and windows, roofing upgrades, pretty much anything that has to do with the efficiency of your home, you can utilize PACE financing to be able to help you to finance that project, utilizing a local contractor that's in your backyard. On a nationwide basis, we have presently had our program available in California, Florida, and Missouri. Ohio becomes the fourth state to make this program available, so we're excited to bring it to the area. And just to give you some numbers on a national basis, there's been over $5 billion, sorry, $5 billion were the financing on the Residential PACE side, and that's about 220,000 homeowners that have taken advantage of PACE in those three states to date. And that's created over 42,000 local jobs, created and sustained those jobs, which is very key to that process. This is a great program to help your local contractors and help your constituents with the ability to make these upgrades. And in comparison, Mark was talking about Commercial PACE. It's been very successful as well, and I know this slide is outdated, but it's close to $1 billion nationwide now that has happened on the side of Commercial PACE. So obviously, with the jobs being created and so forth, this is a great program for the City of Columbus and the State of Ohio. Our portion of that, Renovate America, we've done about 126,000 upgrades of homes in the United States, and the creation of jobs there has been about 28,000 jobs that have been created. The important part to that is how much in the way of utility bill savings homeowners are realizing. That's very important to the bottom line of every one of our residents, and the ability for them to empower themselves with control of their local utility bills and what they're spending in their households. And that's saved about $3.6 billion over the course of the financing that we've done, and at the same time, taken close to five, actually, over 5 million tons of CO2 emissions out of the environment, and that equates to about a million SUVs being taken off of the road, which is very important as an overall policy. So the Ohio opportunity. So PACE is built on a partnership, and I probably don't need to go through much of this, because Caleb kind of outlined the thought process on a statewide basis. But what I did want to hit on is that PACE is serving a very, very important portion of the economy, in that it allows a homeowner to be able to finance a nondiscretionary replacement at their home, and normally, they've selected a less efficient option in the past. What PACE mandates is it mandates that you pick a more efficient model that is being put into your household, thus saving you long-term on your property, on your utility bills, and enabling you to actually have a better environment that you're living in as well. And one of the other things that we address is that homeowners, although contractors are the main point of sale where they're presenting this, contractors are out there working with you as homeowners on a daily basis to be able to present their product, and you call them to your home to come and talk about that. Having PACE available just gives them an additional tool in their toolbox when it comes to financing and helping you out as a homeowner to make this an affordable project for you. But the entire process on the back end is all controlled by Renovate America and the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority in making sure that you qualify, and that all of the underwriting process has gone through, and many of the consumer protections are adhered to, as well as confirmed term calls that we do with homeowners, going over all those terms, and I'll go into that a little bit more thoroughly in a second. So the benefits to the local government, I think we've kind of gone through this, but it really, it helps to be able to provide a program that's voluntary for the communities that we serve, voluntary for the homeowners that we serve, and it enables no taxpayer or ratepayer funds to be utilized. All of the funds that are for the program are born from the program, so it's not on the local government, it's not on the local taxpayer to actually have any burden for this. If I choose to utilize PACE at my home, and Mark doesn't choose to use it at his home, it doesn't affect him in any way, shape, or form. It's a voluntary option for both of us. So how will this work in Ohio? I think Caleb kind of went into all of this, so we'll kind of skip through this quickly. But all of the major ports, as well as energy special improvement districts throughout the state, in the northeast Ohio area of Cleveland and Cuyahoga County, in Akron-Summit County, in Toledo-Lucas County, in Columbus, and the Columbus Finance Authority, down in Cincinnati, and all of the ESIDS that surround the Cincinnati area, all of the ports and the ESIDS came together to create this statewide program. And the flow of how things work is an approval comes through from a homeowner, and it works with the local ESID in the program that has been created on a statewide basis through Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority and Renovate America. We have a bipartisan agreement, and Caleb kind of went through all of this, so I don't want to bore you with any of the other numbers on that, and I want to get more to the consumer protections, and being able to talk about the one-of-a-kind, brand-new program that's coming to you here. So with the consumer protections here in the state, there's a minimum FICO score of 620 to qualify. There's also debt to income that is looked at, to make sure that the homeowner has the ability to pay as well, and that calculation will help to determine the ability to pay for a homeowner. Now, one of the other things is, is that PACE is not determined off of the FICO score. It is, the rate actually goes with the term. So that means that anyone that has a 625 credit score or a 725 credit score will have the same rate on their program, so they'll be able to do it over five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years, and they have that opportunity for them on a very equitable playing field, so that we're not looking at someone with a lower FICO getting a higher rate. PACE is designed to help out all spectrums of our communities, to be able to make it an affordable option for all. And then also, there's going to be a, the combined debt to mortgage, 97% max, so that actually conforms with FHFA and FHA and HUD standards. You have to be current on your mortgage, no involuntary liens against the property over $5,000. over $5,000, no notice of default, so we want someone who is actually in good standing and able to make those payments on their property tax bill, obviously. So we had talked about how this is a first-of-a-kind, FICO-based underwriting for PACE. So FICO is utilized in order to make sure that you do qualify, but then the rate is not based off of that. So minimum qualification is a 620 FICO score, debt-to-income ratio qualifications for that ability to pay, combined loan-to-values, and then also the mortgage requirements, so property requirements, so you have to be current on your mortgage, no involuntary liens, no notice of defaults, and I think I kind of just went through all of that. But clear mortgage-level disclosures are kind of the key as well. What we learned from our past in the state of California was that sometimes people got into products that they didn't understand all of them. So we have actually modeled all of our disclosures, and it's a mandatory part of the program to have a disclosure that is modeled after the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau's No Before You O Form that is used in the mortgage industry and actually gives you a complete APR, all of the fees and so forth, so that a consumer knows exactly what it is that they're financing and what the rate is long-term and what that payment is on their property tax bill on an annualized basis. We also took it a step further, and the confirmed term call that usually ranges from 20 to 25 minutes with a live operator is going through all of those different mechanisms, making sure that they understand the project price, the term, the interest rate, that this is going to be paid back on their property tax bill over time. We also go through a review of if you were to sell or refinance your home, that could be a negotiation at the time of the sale or refinance where it has to be prepaid by the seller out of their proceeds. And of course, that is something that's negotiated in a real estate transaction. We've had discussions with even making sure that we engage the real estate community on a national basis or on a statewide basis to make sure that some of those disclosures change as well. And I know that the Councilman is very involved in that, and he could probably comment on that because he wants to make sure that that is taken care of as well. We also advise and notify homeowners to make sure that they reach out to their mortgage provider. We also make sure that they understand that if they have an escrowed account where their taxes are impounded and escrowed onto their monthly payment, that they are saving for that first payment when it does hit on their mortgage payment as an escrowed payment. We also have lots of contractor requirements that are in place to make sure that they're licensed, bonded, insured, in good standing, and that they make sure that they are good providers. We want nothing but the best of the best contractors here locally to be working with the homeowners of Columbus, and we want local contractors involved. And I know that we'll be working closely with the city to make sure that we are providing as many of the local contractors with education around the program, how to get involved in the program, and we've even created a local Ohio webpage for them, which is www.renovateamerica.com/ohio, or, yeah, it is Ohio, that they can actually go on to, and they can register their business to become part of the HERO program. Also, since the program is not going to be ready for launch till about January of 2020, we also have a site there if a homeowner is interested in utilizing this, that you can register so that we'll reach out to you as the program becomes available in your jurisdiction. And then also, one other thing that is very important to the process of Property-Assessed Clean Energy is the last say in the transaction rests with the homeowner. They actually have a completion certificate that they have to sign off on at the end of a project that actually says the project has been completed to your satisfaction, and then we can actually fund a contractor. No funding actually leaves and goes to a contractor until that completion certificate is completed by the homeowner and the homeowner is happy with the project that they've done. So that enables our homeowners to have the final say in making sure that they're happy with that installation. And then I'll go into some of the key trends around home improvement in general. Most of you can read through these, but part of the reason that PACE was created is that 80% of the market spend comes from households in metro areas, 3/4 from suburban areas, 70% of the market spend is concentrated in aged housing. So we want to help to update that aged housing stock that is out there and help you and your neighbors to be able to upgrade and improve the neighborhoods that we live and exist in together and be able to help you with a financing tool that can help you and your local contractor to make this a reality. With that being said, I do have some other slides that had to do with the homeowner profiles in general, but it just gives you an idea of where our projects have been. Most of them have been in HVAC, some in solar, roofing, doors and window replacements. And one of the key things that I see as an added benefit here in your community is that lead abatement can be a real issue that we can address utilizing PACE because people can actually replace their doors and windows. Landlords, since this is based on their property tax bill, can actually update the current housing stock for tenant-occupied properties as well to be able to do window and door replacements and get rid of the lead that exists in our homes today. So after that, I'll kind of go to the end, and we'll go ahead and return it to Councilman Remy, and thank you very much for your time, and we'll open it up to questions as well.
So thank you very much for the presentations today. Appreciate it. We will ask some questions, and of course, we have some public questions as well. I'll start off with you, Dustin. You know, where are you going to find these contractors? How easy is it for the contractor to get involved? Can I use my contractor, that sort of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. So the way that the program works, Councilman, is that we will register local contractors into our program. So we actually hope to have as many feet on the street as possible, being able to engage your local contractors so that we do outreach to them. We also want to be very inclusive in making sure that we're reaching out to a diverse group of contractors as well. So we want to bring as many contractors that are good, upstanding citizens of your community into the program. If you have a neighbor, a friend, or whatnot that is a local contractor and you wish to use them in the program, it's a very simple process for us to vet that contractor, train that contractor, and bring them into the fold of being a registered contractor for the program. So if a homeowner has someone that they want to use specifically, all we have to do is have you reach out to us with that contractor's information. We can get them signed up, make sure they're licensed, bonded, insured, all of those different things, and do the vetting process and training process with that local contractor, and then you can move forward with your project.
And about how long does that take?
So it usually takes, I would probably defer to my contractor, guys, but normally within 24 to 72 hours, we could actually have a contractor live and in our system, and we also do a very robust program in our system where on Renovate America's website, we actually rank your local contractors on a star basis. So we actually look at three, four, five-star contractors, and we would actually have a list of contractors that's very robust for you as a homeowner to reach out to so that you can get multiple bids when you're actually looking at doing a project.
Yeah, go ahead. You don't need to press.
Okay. So just a follow-up question to are contractors getting approved to be a part of the program? How long is the actual training process? I know you said 24, 48 hours for them to get on the list, but is the actual certification process a little onerous, and is there a cost associated with that?
So the cost is 100% borne by us and our team in making sure that we reach out to them and that we train them on how to utilize the program. It's hard for me to answer perfectly that question, but here's what I will say. It's quick to get into the process. We go ahead and we reach out to ownership, and then we get meetings with the sales team and the sales individuals within a organization to make sure that they understand how to present the PACE program and how to make sure that they know the nuances of how it works, because we want to make sure they're presenting it properly. So it could be as early as 72 hours that they're ready and ready to go, but normally it does take a little bit longer to get out there and make sure that we're doing a full training with them and making sure that everyone on that sales team is brought into the fold. Yeah.
And then if we're not ready to tee up until January ideally, is that an opportunity for folks in our community to start getting in that pipeline right now?
Absolutely, yes, please. We really want to have as many contractors involved, and that's why two of our representatives on the contractor side, Donovan and Jake, are here today to engage with any of your local contractors and anyone that the city has in good standing that we can reach out to and start working with them, because we don't want to not start working on it until it launches in January. We want to reach out now and start doing all of that training to make sure that we can hit the road running and have a successful program for your city.
So Dustin, my furnace goes out, it's January, it's zero outside.
Sounds painful.
It is. And so I want to understand, you know, what the process is for the homeowner so that they, you know, can I get this approved in a quick fashion, because otherwise it doesn't do me any good if I need heat the next day.
You're right, Councilman. So the beauty of the way our program is designed is we're a technology platform, so we enable contractors to present at the kitchen table along with, after the sale has commenced, as an option for financing. They engage with us either via a telephone call or through their computer, the homeowner anyway, where we can actually give a live decision process so that they can move forward with their project as soon as possible. Now, obviously, we follow all of the rules of engagement, making sure that there's a three-day right of rescission, right to cancel for the homeowners, things of that nature, but that is something that as a homeowner, you could waive that if you're freezing, Councilman. So definitely, we have the ability to empower those contractors to be able to work with that homeowner live, real-time, and have a decision process for the homeowner 90% of the time within 15 minutes.
Could you discuss, just on average, with something like that, what might cost for a homeowner, right? If we're talking maybe like a water heater, and then maybe something like full improvements for a home?
Sure, sure. Well, our closest market to here is the state of Missouri, and we operate in St. Louis as well as Kansas City, and what we've seen on average is the average PACE assessment is somewhere around $16,000, and the average rate that we've seen is somewhere in the 7 percentile range. Our rates vary. We see lower rates on solar projects sometimes that start at 2.99% up to a cap of 8.35% for your homeowners. And it is a little bit more costly to operate a residential program because of the scale. So you did hear that the average term was 20 years and 5.7% from Mark on the commercial side. On the residential side, it is about a point, point and a half higher on average on those projects. But the other thing that's nice is that it is tied to the useful life of the product. So we don't finance beyond the useful life of that product. So if it's an HVAC system, a furnace or whatnot, we're going to have a life expectancy, depending on the product, obviously, of probably 15 years, and that would be the maximum term they can choose. But as an option, the homeowners have the option to pick 5, 10, or 15 years worth of financing on that for themselves. But if we have a long-term solar project or a re-roof project, something of that nature, we can finance it 5, 10, 15, 20, or even 25-year term to spread out those payments and make that payment lower on an annualized basis for them.
So what if Councilmember Remy is just really, has bad luck, and even after he's got the energy-efficient water heater, it goes out again, it needs repairs? Who comes out and does it?
First of all, he just lost a friendship because he said it was a friend, but secondly, we actually have a very robust backend process to our product offering. So we have a risk and compliance department with ex-law enforcement and people who have retired as assistant DAs and so forth that work in our risk and compliance department to make sure that all the rules of the road are followed by contractors, number one. Number two is that we get involved on the backend to make sure that that homeowner is happy. First of all, hopefully, he wouldn't have signed off on the completion of it if it wasn't working, but let's say it goes another six months down the road and then breaks again, we'll make sure that we get involved to help them out and realize that the local contractors are going to be, since we are a funding source for them, they will be very quick to answer the phone and make sure that they're helping us out in helping that homeowner. If that contractor ceases to exist, we have such a robust offering with all of the different contractors locally that we'll reach out with one of the, to one of the best-in-class locally and have them go out and help the Councilman with his particular upgrade to make sure that he's happy, because we want to make sure that we have happy constituents, not just council members.
So will you work with Councilmember Remy to secure the necessary permits through the Building and Zoning Department to install these certain issues?
Yeah, so part of the program requirements are that the proper permits need to be pulled to make it available. The statistic, and I hope I don't misquote it, but I believe it's less than 30% of HVAC contractors on a nationwide basis pull permits. In our program, it is a requirement to follow local jurisdiction requirements. If there's a requirement for a permit to be pulled, we're going to have that permit pulled, and obviously, those are requirements in the city for HVAC and solar and things of that nature. So we want to make sure that they're following the rules of the road, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any protections in place for the consumer to make sure that they're receiving fair and competitive pricing?
Yes, actually, that's a great question. Because of our experience in doing close to 130,000 assessments nationwide, we actually have a standard deviation of what each of our product SKUs should or does cost. We have over a million product SKUs that are in our platform, in our technology platform, and we actually have a maximum financeable amount that is listed in there as well. We do not share that information with the contractors so that they don't know what the max is that they could charge, but we make sure that everything fits within that standard deviation to make sure that someone is not being price gouged. And that's a process that we've learned over time really protects the consumer in making sure that they're getting the best possible deal. We also, like I said on our website, want to make sure that they get multiple bids as well. So we want to make sure that they're looking at different options that are out there as well, and we're just happy to be a financing option at the time of sale.
So there's no, if an individual homeowner wants to go with a different lending entity, they have the right to do that and still participate in the PACE program?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the key things is that contractors like working with our platform, so we get lots of approvals, but of those approvals, not everyone moves forward with the project with us. So of the number of applicants that we get, we normally see 60 to 70% of homeowners that qualify, and they're approved, but that's a conditional approval, and it's on whether or not they want to move forward. Many times, a homeowner finds another option, or even the contractor has another option that they offer up to that homeowner, and at time of sale, they actually make that choice. So of those approvals, we only see probably 50, around 50% that move forward using our financing option, but the key is, it's an option that you're making available, which is good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just going to comment earlier. As Dustin was describing several of the protections that a homeowner would experience along the way, such as a requirement that permits are pulled, some testing of the pricing, that it's not merely the capital provider who checks those things, the statewide entity that came together to govern this program will double-check them. So you have to have this concept of who's watching the watcher, and that is what the role of the Toledo Port in this system does. They double-check all of the conclusions that those folks make so that if there really is something that's a little bit out there that got through, somebody else has the opportunity to double-check to make sure the permits were pulled, to make sure that the pricing was right. So we felt that in designing the program, you know, I wear the government hat and represent the government side, certainly, we wanted to have the ability to double-check all the actions of the capital providers, and part of the program is that not only can capital providers be excluded from the program, but also individual contractors or companies if there's repeat activity that the government folks see. So part of it is, you know, proper conversation. If we see things going on here that we may not see in other parts of the state, if that conversation can bubble up to the program, then the program can take some actions.
And so will that checking entity also make sure that contracts are being fairly dispersed from all of our contractors? We want to make sure that our minority and women business contractors are also getting a fair share.
Yeah, so it's prudent and part of the program that anybody who is able to work with one of the capital providers, they can certainly participate. The different regions are obviously, you know, amongst Ohio regions, they're urban regions, and so there are different contractor groups that operate in Toledo and in Akron and here, and one of the efforts of the program is to solicit from the different regions, who do we go to? Who can we qualify? And so we'll be looking for feedback, you know, through, you know, obviously, your all's office and your staffs about, you know, how we can get these folks plugged in, because I think in the Akron region, it was over 4,000 contractors who are identified, and so we want to be able to provide that high of absorption.
So you mentioned Akron. What other Ohio municipalities have this today?
Yeah, that's a great question.
What's the demand been like?
Yeah, the demand has been great. So the city of Toledo and about eight jurisdictions that surround Toledo have approved of the program. that surround Toledo have approved of the program in making it available to their constituents. The city of Akron and the cities that surround it, I think 11 cities that surround it at this time, have approved of the program. Recently, the Energy Special Improvement Districts that are down in Cincinnati, suburban communities, the Western Communities, ESID, Union Township, Green Township, all of those ESIDs have recently joined as well, making the program pretty robust on a statewide basis, which is great. We also have the Northeast Ohio area, up in Cleveland, Coyoga County, that they're looking at the program and bringing it forward, as well as locally, I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout-out for your local mayor in Beckley, that was one of the first movers to make the program available. So...
So we have a lot of rehabs occurring all over the city of Columbus, but we also have a lot of new builds. And so as we continue to talk about how folks can be better stewards environmentally, is this program available for new builds?
So it is available via legislation, but it doesn't really make sense for new builds. And we've had the discussion pretty robustly about it, I believe. And the reason being is that normally during a rebuild, the homeowner or the property owner is building from scratch, or if it's a brand-new building. And then when they're selling off the property, there's going to be a mortgage that is provided on it. They're probably going to have a better cost of funds in getting a mortgage in the fair market today than PACE will offer to them. So we would rather them get a good quality, you know, rate through a mortgage provider.
Might be solar. Folks who are interested in solar after they have just purchased an MI home, or something like that, might be able to access the program right away as an upgrader, an improvement to something that just came out of the stock.
That's very important to the process. And that's really, it's a renovation, but it's not a renovation, because they're upgrading their property, but they can do it at closing and actually be moving forward with a solar project as they're closing on their new home.
And I think that's really important to bring up, because there's still tax credits for energy efficiency, correct?
Yes.
And so a homeowner could also be able to claim that.
Absolutely. There's a couple of things. Energy efficiency rebates that the utility companies do offer, as well as certain federal and state tax credits for energy-efficient measures. And if you were to put a geothermal or a solar system in, you'd be eligible for different tax credits at different levels. So there are other government programs that help support, you know, the greening of our environment, which is great. And so these are not inconsistent. They can pair together.
Wonderful.
And that brings up a good subject for me as well, Councilwoman, in that if a person does have a rebate that comes, a federal rebate or something of that nature, they can actually pay down their PACE assessment, any amount over $2,500, they can pay it down so that they re-amortize it over the long term as well with no prepayment penalties, which is very key. Yeah.
What are the upfront costs on this?
Yeah, the upfront costs, there's closing costs that are associated with it, sort of like any other financing tool that might be out there. But the interest rates range from 2.99% to 8.35%. And the costs that are associated are pretty much just the costs that are borne from the administration of the program for the ports and bond council and the trustees. There's so many different partners that are involved in making a bond actually occur. So all of those fees are borne from the program as well. And obviously, on the Know Before You Owe form, fully disclosed to the homeowner so that they have that. And it's disclosed in a technology platform where they walk through it ahead of time so that they know what their payment's going to be. And we break it down into monthly or annual so that they could see what the difference is, or even, you know, once every six months, because that's how most of our taxpayers like to pay their bills.
If, does the consumer have a choice? I mean, Renovate America, the only game in town, what's the story on that?
No, we're the first provider that have actually come to town. And when, I know Caleb commented on it, when Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority, as well as the other ports, came together to look at the program, they went out and visited other capital providers that are in the PACE space to actually meet with them and see whether or not their platform worked for the state. As Caleb said, Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority had done a local program with their land bank where they financed, I think, close to 40 projects themselves. They averaged around $10,000 or $11,000 a project. And so they knew that to create a scalable model was going to take a technology platform and a very robust backend. So they came to us to have us help in developing the program and implementing it in the beginning in the state. But it's an open platform for other lenders to come into down the road. So say, for instance, Huntington Bank or Fifth Third Bank decides someday down the road, they want to be involved in PACE. It's an open platform on a statewide basis for them.
Caleb, go over the role that the city has as far as, you know, what is our role in this whole process?
Yeah, it's a great question. So first of all, your primary role is policy role. Council has the authority under the statutes to determine whether or not this mechanism's available to homeowners. So the first action item essentially is flipping the switch with an ordinance that would permit the activity to occur within the city. So that's kind of the most important role, and that's the policy role. Once the program is available within the city, there is a tracking and record-keeping role that's involved on implementation. You heard how homeowners will end up with a contractor who may have multiple choices for financing. And if they end up choosing residential PACE, there's a process where they're underwritten. And then there's a process where the program, the government partners in the program, double-check that underwriting. When that occurs, that property gets put on a list. It gets enrolled onto a list. And then, once a year, as council does with other action items like sidewalk assessments, lighting assessments, nuisance assessments, those enrollees from the year will be put onto an ordinance to be certified to the county auditor for the next year's collection. So we do all this on an annual basis in Ohio. We have assessments that get certified to the county, and then the county bills them off to the taxpayers on individual parcel basis the next year. So the two things that city council does in this program are, first of all, consider whether to authorize the program. And secondly, if you do, annually, you would certify the assessments from the prior year over to the county auditor. So that, doing the program in that fashion helps to remove much of the burden of administering the program, primarily on folks like, you know, Mark and other staff who might otherwise have many individual pieces of legislation to address. So that's a way to manage that activity. Also, once these items are assessed and the county auditor collects the money, the county auditor and the city auditor will do a reconciliation of their books, essentially. And the city auditor has an important role with all assessments in the city to determine which parcels are getting assessed and why. And so there's a record-keeping function between the two governments, our county government and the city auditor's office, so that properly, when, you know, audited and when accounting occurs, all of the individual parcels that are paying PACE assessments are identified.
So once the cost is assessed to the person's tax duplicate, is it, renovate America out of the picture altogether? And is it, and then it's then incumbent upon the county and city to collect those funds?
Yes and no. I mean, renovate America will still obviously be involved in ensuring that the funds get back into the bond repayment system. So the county, the regular process would be the county auditor settles accounts with the city. And the county auditor, you know, causes money to be deposited with the city auditor, for the city auditor to use the money for those purposes. Here in this program, instead of depositing the money with the city auditor, the money ends up going to repay the bondholders. And so that tracking is an important function that Renovate will continue to have, because what we want to do is ensure that everybody who paid, their money gets to repayment. When the item was funded upfront, it was funded to a contractor, renovate America deserves to be repaid because they funded it. And so that's the, it's important for them. They'll track the money because they'll have an incentive to track the money. They'll want to be repaid.
Have there been instances where homeowners have been unable to pay the bill, their tax bill?
My understanding from a national perspective is that there has not been a tax foreclosure of a residential PACE assessment, despite there being $200,000 or more. That does not mean that there hasn't been a late payment perhaps by a property owner who was a little late. We have in Ohio, a little bit of a grace period before you get hit with penalties and interest. And all that is administered by the county auditor. So it is not administered by the city offices in any way. It will, if there were a delinquency of a property owner's tax payment, it'll be administered in the same fashion as any other delinquency by the county.
And so in the same vein, what if a homeowner walks away from the property? It runs with the land, correct?
Yeah, that's a great question. So if the homeowner walks away from the property, the assessment may go delinquent. What the county will do to enforce a delinquent assessment, if there were a sewer assessment, if there's a PACE assessment, plus importantly, all the other taxes, right? The taxes that we pay to the schools, and to the city, and to the county. All of those things are administered by the county prosecuting attorney's office. The county prosecuting attorney's office will put that parcel, along with any other parcel who is delinquent, on a list. And they will then enforce against that parcel. There are a lot of intermediate steps in enforcement. So there are ways in which the county can, and work with the property owner to go on a payment plan, for example. The county can also have a bit of a grace period with that property owner, work out a different time for payment than the build time. If it goes long enough, it is possible that you go to a sheriff's sale. It's also possible that you see tax certificates. That's a fairly common practice, where somebody else will come in, step in the shoes of the property owner, pay the bill, but then they will work out payment with the property owner. So when Councilman Remy didn't pay, you know, he and I will have to work it out, right?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, of course.
All right. Are there any other questions that you have?
I ask a lot of questions. No.
I mean, this is, it's a complex program, but we want to make sure that everybody has a thorough understanding. We do have some speakers, so I would like to move on to them at the moment. Our first speaker this afternoon, again, reminder that, to state your name, the address that you live at, and you have three minutes to then speak. Our first speaker is Lauren Squires. Ms. Squires, thank you for coming down, and we look forward to your questions.
Hi. My name's Lauren Squires. I live at 474 Wyandotte Avenue, Columbus, Ohio 43202. I was not really expecting to make a comment, but really be able to ask questions. So my comment is really a series of questions. And my first question has to do with Renovate America as the financer of this program. I Googled Renovate America, and the first thing that comes up is a lot of news articles about Renovate America's predatory lending practices, including a recent settlement for millions of dollars that was reached in California. A number of municipalities have sued the company and argued that not only the company, but also the model of the loan itself is predatory in nature. So I would like to know why the city is entering agreement with this company? Was there a bidding process that other companies, you know, came to offer their services as well? How did all of this come about? That this is the relationship? And what are the assurances that you have? You mentioned a couple of consumer protections issues, but I think the reality is that the potential for predatory practices here goes beyond sort of what you have mentioned. So I would like a response to that. I would also like to hear the city, sorry, speak on how you think this program will benefit our most vulnerable populations in Columbus. I appreciate that we do have these protections about equity and ability to pay, but that seems to mean that the program will go towards people who already have equity and ability to pay, and has the potential also to raise property values and taxes in neighborhoods in a gentrification-type process. So what are the perhaps complimentary things that are being put in place to help folks who would not be eligible for this kind of loan? And what might be, for instance, incentives for landlords to actually take advantage of this program? Because landlords are not the ones who pay the utilities. So if that's the incentive, that my utility bills are going to be lower, that's not an incentive that most landlords actually respond to. So is that something that might be considered as a way to help renters with this type of program as well? And then finally, does the city maintain any autonomy and ability to set or limit the rate amount? So you mentioned that Renovate America has this range currently, at least, of what the rates are. What is the city's role in determining the rate, and potentially, I would argue, maybe wanting to be able to limit the rate, you know, obviously in line with whatever market conditions are. But so those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm wondering, I appreciate your questions. And I did have another one that I think should, it's going to absolutely complement that. If we could define the definition of what residential is, we tend to think residential as single-family or perhaps a duplex. But she's absolutely correct. We do have an affordable housing situation in our community. And so if we're seeking to make sure our vulnerable residents are being taken care of, is this program going to be available to landlords that could then pass that savings on to their potential tenants in the future?
So this is a multi-part question. So let's start with the predatory lending question. Obviously, you're best suited to answer that question.
Sure. I could definitely address that. When PACE was originally designed in the state of California and implemented, it was unfortunate that maybe there were some contractors that may not have represented the program 100%, you know, above board. The only qualifier back when the program started was equity in the property and the qualification. Here in Ohio, you're going to have an incredibly different product that's actually being implemented into the marketplace with all of the different consumer protections that have been learned over time to actually be good protections that make sure that a homeowner has the right disclosures, has the right knowledge of the product, knows what's going on to their home, knows what the cost of it long-term is going to be, knows what the benefits of the product are. There's no misrepresentation of it. We have a live, recorded telephone call with the homeowner, making sure that we go through all of these things to make sure that they understand all of the different factors. And that wasn't part of the program when it first began back in the day. And that is probably part of the reason that there were some of the different things. We felt to be a good player in the marketplace, we're not the only PACE provider that's out there. There are other PACE providers that have done, that have been operating the same way. It's just that we wanted to be an upstanding citizen and come forward and say, if there were any homeowners that feel as if they were hurt in any way, we stepped up and we had an agreement with DAs within California to make sure that people were made whole. We're very, very community-oriented and want to make sure that people that we serve in those communities are always taken care of. So that's number one. Number two is that will there be certain members of the community that miss out on this program? Yeah, this program's not for everyone. But one of the nice things is that through the overall program statewide, there's a mission fund that's being created to be able to have all of the different ports and ESIDs come together and utilize that mission fund to be able to help others in the community. And I'll let Caleb kind of expand on that. Landlords and utility bills, I want to hit on that. This is just another tool that could help if there are ordinances that mandate that there are certain upgrades that have to happen in communities. We're seeing that up in the Cleveland area, where they actually have certain ordinances that they're putting into place that are mandating all of these upgrades. Well, this gives another tool in the toolbox for that landlord to be able to do those types of upgrades. And then, set the limit on the rates, yes, definitely. Columbus Finance Authority, as part of the program, with input from the city, have the ability to have input on the overall program on a statewide basis. And then to define for the councilmember, residential, as referred to as residential PACE, is three or less units. So anything that's four or more units is a commercial setting. And then contact Mark because he's ready to finance it.
On this same, I want to clarify for the public that Columbus, what Columbus's role is in this legislation and the selection of Renovate America versus, so Caleb probably could speak best to this, but this was a policy set by the state legislature that decided that the port authority would run the program, in this case, the Toledo Port Authority. So every port authority throughout the state agreed Toledo would be the authorizing agency. They said, Columbus Port Authority, for instance, said, "We're not going to do this. We'll rely on Toledo to do it." So that's why they're involved. And then Toledo Port Authority, and I'm assuming the other port authorities weighed in, they decided that Renovate America would introduce this product to the state of Ohio. So what Columbus's role is to say, yes, we're going to allow residents to take advantage of this program, or no. That is our role completely. And at that point, I'll let you go into further explanation.
Sure, yeah. And just to the Councilman's point, the port community, when designing the program, did evaluate all of the different providers, chose the one that had the most experience in the market. And frankly, in the market, and frankly, the one that had the strongest consumer protection bent to it. They evaluated others and said, "This is the one that we think we can work with." The consumer protections are kind of one of a kind, as we've noted. They were developed by the ports and approved by them. We've also sent copies to the Consumer Finance Protection Bureau in Washington, because those folks are also interested in how residential PACE rolls out. And so I think there's been a really positive discussion about that. But we did have to find somebody to lead, because otherwise, we would have had a structure that would have not been as coherent. So the selection of Renovate was done. That's done under port selection, not under city. And so that's kind of that. I would also just note on the mission fund concept, that was very important to the ports, because there'll be a little bit of earnings, some money that comes as a result of the bond transactions that occur. Essentially, Renovate pays the port community to participate here, and part of that earnings gets decided on by the local community. So there's talk, discussion. We haven't launched the program yet, but there's talk about potentially doing a second wave program for folks who can't qualify for this one, for folks who don't have as high of a credit score, but nonetheless want to do an energy efficiency and alternative energy project, that a revolving loan fund or a loan loss fund with that mission money can support a second wave of financing. That is still in its infancy as a concept, but it is a concept in the current documentation that we would have a mission fund to get to that second community, who may be there with equity, but just, you know, has a little, you know, maybe a credit history issue, so.
But just to clarify, the homeowner has the ultimate decision about who their PACE provider will be?
100%. The homeowner can choose.
They're financing.
They're financing. So they may offer three years, same as cash, 0%. They may offer, you know, their own credit card, but, you know, this is just an option that they have if they want to choose a different way of financing it.
That's right.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
Right. You know, any contractor usually has a variety of different financing options, and so we view this in light of House Bill 6, for instance, and the potential that residential rebate, energy efficiency rebates going away from residents. This is just an opportunity to finance in a different way if the traditional ways don't work. We have, next speaker is David Reinbold. David, if you could step forward and state your name, what organization you may represent, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Dave Reinbold. I'm the executive director of Ohio Partners for Affordable Energy. I live at 186 South Front Street, number 301 here in Columbus. My organization represents 50 nonprofits. We weatherize low-income housing. We do 18,000 to 20,000 units a year, so we affect the lives of a lot of people. We also help over 300,000 families pay their utility bills every year. So we're very familiar with the consumer protection issues associated with PACE. Most recently, I spent three years in DC. I worked for the U.S. Department of Energy, running the National Weatherization Program. And in that capacity, I served on the team at DOE that developed the Best Practices Manual for PACE Financing. And I will tell you frankly, I'm here, when I came back, I was concerned to find that residential PACE has a toehold in Ohio, because I'm very concerned about the program and the consumer protection aspects. I mean, I appreciate the fact that Renovate has improved the consumer protections that they utilize, but they just settled for $4 million with six counties in California on August 9th. So maybe they learned the lesson very quickly, very recently. There are, and I think our point is, is that any loan product that can result in the loss of the home should follow the Truth in Lending Act, because we saw what happened 10 years ago with the mortgage meltdown. We need to protect against that for homeowners here. For the low and moderate income customer who are homeowners, that may be their only asset, and we can't afford to let them lose it. In addition, other programs exist. Some old data indicated that Renovate, about 25% of their customers are low-income. Those are people we serve for free. So the fact that people are taking out loans when they could get a free service funded by the federal government, the state government, and every major utility in the state which have programs, not just for low income, but also for what we refer to as market-rate customers. And those involve some significant subsidies. I don't see anything in this proposal that integrates this financing mechanism with pre-existing programs that are designed to help customers save energy. I would also recommend you take a look at the Public Utilities Commission's consumer protection rules that relate to energy marketers. They have been thought through, revised. We have some of the best in the nation. You may want to take a look at those as you move through this process. And I think generally, consumer protections should be put in statute for this program. The settlement in California only happened because there was state law, state law that was passed in response to problems that they saw with the program. So I think we need to look at that as well. And I'll give you five quick recommendations associated with it.
If you wouldn't mind, because you're over the three minutes.
I apologize for that. Lower-income families should be offered grant funds when they're available, as should moderate-income customers. Ability to pay is critical, and I'm glad to see you've incorporated that in your program model. It isn't there in every state. Communications need to be proactive, clear, and transparent. Contractors should be certified. I didn't hear Building Performance Institute mention during the certification process. That's what people who do energy efficiency programs, those are the certifications they get. We certify crew members, crew leaders, auditors, and quality control inspectors, and I think they should adopt those approaches. And then, there obviously needs to be a complaint resolution process, and it looks like that's a little better here. I'd also point out that I think these PACE loans are, they're really just a home renovation loan with a fancier name. You don't do windows if you're doing energy efficiency. They don't pay back for about 35 or 40 years. So if you want clean energy loans, narrow it down so that it pays for energy measures that will save the customer money.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Reinbold. We appreciate the opportunity to hear from you. I want to now call up, sorry, I can't, Miranda Lepel from the Ohio Environmental Council. If you could just state your name, what organization you represent, and any address that you're at. Sorry, three minutes.
Sure. My name is Miranda Lepel. I'm testifying on behalf of the Ohio Environmental Council Action Fund. We're located at 1145 Chesapeake Avenue, Suite I, Columbus, Ohio 43212. Thank you to councilmembers Reamy and Favor for hosting this today. Again, my name is Miranda Lepel. I'm the vice president of energy policy for OEC Action Fund. We are celebrating our 50th anniversary as an organization this year, and we work to secure healthy air, land, and water for all who call Ohio home. I'll be brief with my comments, obviously, today, but felt it was important to speak up about this program and in support of the city's efforts to find new ways to become more sustainable here in central Ohio. The OEC Action Fund is pleased to see the city's dedication to renewables and efficiency continue to increase with innovative opportunities like the RPACE program under consideration today. With the proper consumer protections, as described by Mr. Bell earlier today, RPACE has the ability to significantly expand the access to and who has, who can afford to be part of the clean energy transition in our community. At a time when we see our legislature rolling back clean energy standards statewide, which will affect some of the energy efficiency rebates from utilities currently that exist for homeowners, the importance of leadership by our cities and communities on sustainability and on the fight against climate change cannot be understated. So thank you to the city of Columbus, and especially to our members of city council here today, for your dedication to ensuring a cleaner, more sustainable future for Columbus.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. I do want to mention, you know, I see our partners from Columbia Gas here today. Thanks for coming. And if there's anybody else, I apologize for missing you. But we did win the Bloomberg Climate Challenge Grant, and with that is a challenge to make sure that we do energy audits on, was it 30,000 homes within the city of Columbus. And so this is a big component of this. You know, what interests me was the opportunity to push people to do more energy-efficient savings, or I'm sorry, energy-efficient projects around their homes. With that audit, I would encourage, you know, this is a holistic, you know, thought process, but I would encourage people to, if you haven't had an energy audit in some time, to get a hold of, you can go to our website to find out more about this program, but go, call Columbia Gas, and all these numbers are on the columbus.gov website. But call Columbia Gas, call AAP, call Morpse. All of them are doing energy audits, and you will help count towards the goal of hitting that 30,000 mark by the end of next year. I know Columbia's in particular, because I've had it done, and my house is rather substantial. It takes several hours. I think ours took about four hours, but they seal the house up. They actually, they actually will do a test to see, you know, what the pressure is, where the leaks are. They take thermal guns, and they tell you where the insulation levels are in your house. And in many cases, there's some rebates associated with it. So before we ever get to the point of financing, there are certainly significant cost savings, especially for our senior citizens, by going through these energy audits. So I would encourage those that are listening to have an energy audit done, because it's an important component of this. And then, call one of the contractors that are recommended, and maybe they'll be associated with this program if we were to pass it. Maybe they won't. But the point is, is that, you know, we need to become more sustainable in our thinking and the way that we run our households, and so we're looking at opportunities through the city of Columbus to encourage that behavior. Are there any questions or comments remaining from my panelists or my colleague? All right, seeing that, I want to thank everybody for coming today. Thanks to Mark Lundeen, to Caleb Bell, Dustin Reilich from Renovate America. I'd also like to thank councilmember Favor for taking time out of her busy schedule to join me today. I do want to recognize our CTV production team for their help in getting us the information out. To those who could not physically be here to join us this afternoon, thank you so much. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my team, Jeff Carter, my legislative aide, Lucy Frank, my legislative assistant, Matt Erickson, our director of legislative research, Andrew Dyer, who is one of our legislative researchers that couldn't be here today, and most importantly, the community for your suggestions, your feedback. This isn't the last discussion that we'll be having about this particular program. And so I just want to thank you for taking time out of your schedule to come today. We will make sure to either put the presentation online. I know what we'll do is email those that have signed in today, the presentation, because I know some of the things were not able to be read because of the size, but we'll make sure those are emailed out, and we'll also try to put that presentation online. If there's no other business before this panel, I appreciate the time, and that's the end of this public hearing. Thank you so much, and enjoy your day.